Good evening, everyone. At this time, I will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for November 3rd, 2022, beginning at 6:46. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustees may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or may be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Chapa in leading us into pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is programs and presentation. Dr. Cavassos? Anita Foster?
Hello. Greetings, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos again, and everyone that's here tonight and everyone watching online. We have a fantastic performance tonight as we welcome the Drum Club from Remenzi Elementary School. They are under the direction of Rebecca Myers, who's their music teacher. The Drum Club is an elite group of 5th and 6th graders. They work as a team, and they utilize their advanced music skills, including their complex rhythms, musical interpretation, and their creative expression to create very entertaining performances. We're going to get to see one tonight. They've performed all over the place. They've been at Six Flags, the Levitt Pavilion, they've been to Sam Houston High School a few times, and who knows, maybe they'll play your event for your next one. In honor of Veterans Day tonight, though, they are going to be performing "God Bless the USA" by Lee Greenwood. They really want to just thank you all for being here and being a part of the music they're going to share with you tonight. So, big drum roll, please, for the Remenzi Elementary Drum Club. Oh, thank you. Y'all got it. Good deal.
Tomorrow, all the things were gone. I worked for all my life, and I had to start again with just my children and my wife. Thank my lucky stars to be living here today, because the flag still stands for freedom, and they can't take that away. And I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I'll gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA. From the lakes of Minnesota to the hills of Tennessee, across the plains of Texas, from sea to shining sea, Detroit down to Houston and New York to L.A. Where there's pride in every American heart, it's time we stand and say that I'm proud to be an American where at least I know I'm free. And I won't forget the men who died, who gave that right to me. And I'll gladly stand up next to you and defend her still today, because there ain't no doubt I love this land. God bless the USA.
Forget Lee Greenwood. We have a new star. What an incredible performance. I'm going to think of that version instead of Lee Greenwood version from now on. That was so much better. I loved the drums, and his singing was phenomenal. That was so good. Sorry, we're trying to save money. We're not fancy people. All right, it's time for our November 2022 Student of the Month, Arlington Collegiate High School student Julie Sanchez. And Principal Jeff Krieger, do you want to give us some information about this outstanding young lady?
Oh, I most definitely do. For President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to recognize one of the many amazing students we have at Arlington Collegiate High School. Today, we recognize our sophomore Julie Sanchez as our Student of the Month. She's a young woman who's hardworking, always striving to reach her goals. She's always positive, respectful, always helping keep her classmates on task. She's a perfect example of what it means to be a lion. Just to give you a little small sample of what some of her teachers have said about her. Julie is a picture-perfect definition of an ACHS lion. She never stops working towards her academic goals, even when she's met with challenges. Her perseverance and dedication to bettering herself and those around her is exactly what makes her deserving of this recognition. Another teacher also put on here that she is dedicated, hardworking, always striving to reach her goals. She embodies what it means to be an ACHS lion through her resiliency and self-sufficiency. Two hallmark beliefs at Arlington Collegiate High School is students having a great attitude and be willing to work hard. We can provide all the other supports and resources, but students need to bring those on there. And Julie definitely brings that. She exemplifies what we believe in every single day. I feel very fortunate to be her principal at Arlington Collegiate High School, and I, along with the faculty and staff, are looking forward to seeing all the great things she will accomplish in the future. So, please join me congratulating Arlington Collegiate High School Student of the Month, Ms. Julie Sanchez. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Melissa Sanchez. This is my mom and dad and aunt and grandma over there.
Want to tell us what you like best at the early college high school?
I just like being there and getting challenges.
And apparently, you are meeting those challenges and doing very well to be selected as the Student of the Month. Congratulations. We are so proud of you. We know how hard it is at the early college high school. They can be very demanding, can't they? But they know that you're capable, and obviously, you're willing. And so, the sky is a limit for you. We are so proud of you. Can we come down and give you a little reward? All right, as you see, we all wear, oh, thank you. We all wear a special pin. We would like to include you in our circle of pin wearers. Is that a word? Wearers. And I would like to present you with this pin. We would love for you to wear it and let everyone to know that you're an Arlington ISD student and how proud we are of you. But you don't have to wear it every day if you don't want to. All right? Sometimes, I just put mine on on Thursdays. I don't wear it all the time. All right? We're so proud of you.
Melissa, congratulations on being the Student of the Month. We're very proud of you. You represent our students very, very well. You represent your school very well, and I'm very, very proud of you. I know you work hard, and I know you have a great future ahead of you. This is something else we provide, just so you can remember tonight, and congratulations again.
Now, we come to our open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net no later than 3:00 P.M. the day of the board meeting. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And tonight, I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Arlington High School.
Do I have a motion to approve the administrative ratifications as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hibbs. Please vote. The vote passes in... Wait a minute, let me rethink. Let me what? The vote passes in the affirmative?
Thank you. Thank you, President Fowler. And I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal there at Arlington High School, Mr. Jesus Pigna. All right, you can stay standing. He's got the green tie already. So, Jesus attended Texas State University in San Marcos for Bachelor of Science in Public Relations, University of North Texas in Denton for Master in Ed for Ed Leadership, most recently, a campus coordinator at Spence Middle School in Dallas ISD, has been an orchestra director as well, has been the Head Mariachi Director at Garland, Assistant Mariachi Director in Fort Worth, and then Mariachi and Orchestra Director in Dallas ISD. Jesus, congratulations and welcome to Arlington and Arlington High School.
We are so pleased that you will be joining the Arlington High School family. And obviously, we think you're going to do a very good job. We all voted for you. So, we think you're going to do a good job. Don't let us down. Congratulations. We're so proud to have you, and you have an awesome principal to work with, and I think you're just going to do very, very well. So, congratulations. Thank you. We now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion for Ms. Mays, a second for Ms. McMurial. Please vote. The vote carries in the affirmative. Thank you. We now move to our discussion item number one. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And tonight, we bring a discussion item, more of an update on the STAR test redesign. And just as a reminder, we've had a lot of discussion related to our curriculum assessments, et cetera. The STAR is being redesigned, and so is the accountability system. And so, we're in a unique year where those two things are actually being revised and redesigned. And so, it's an important time for us to not only share an update, but also to make sure that everybody has this information across the system, especially those serving our students. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Wertz to lead us through the STAR redesign update. Dr. Wertz?
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. I'm here this evening to talk about the redesign that's taking place for the STAR exam that's happening this school year. I want to emphasize a point that Dr. Cavassos just made, which he referred to the fact that the accountability system is being refreshed at the same time. And oftentimes, we hear the two terms STAR redesign and the refresh used almost simultaneously as two of the same things, but they're actually two separate things that speak to each other. So, tonight, what I'm going to do is talk about what are the changes that are actually happening in the way the STAR exam is being designed and what implications that's had on our curriculum and how we've responded to it here in Arlington. So, many of the slides that you're going to see come directly from TEA. They publish information out to districts back in the beginning of the year, February-ish, where they shared with districts specifically what elements of the STAR exam were actually going to be changed and the rationale behind those changes. And so, tonight, you'll see, I'm going to share with you direct information from TEA, and then I'll supplement that with things that we're actually doing here in Arlington. So, the STAR redesign was actually initiated by House Bill 3906, and this basically required the state to rethink about the way that they were designing the STAR so that it would mimic more what quality instruction looks like in a day-to-day environment in the classroom. So, some of these changes that were mandated back in 2019 were putting a cap on the number... So, in this example you'll see in front of you, the old way was write about your favorite place you've traveled to. In the second one, it's read these two articles, and then using evidence, write a summary. And so, when you think about which one relies on an experience you can have in school versus one that would rely on an experience you'd have to have outside of school, you want to lean towards the... So, this was done, this concept was integrated into the redesign of the STAR. So, now, instead of having a standalone writing test, all reading assessments will include writing in the middle of the assessment. So, students will be asked to give text-based, asked to respond to text-based questions. So, this is an example that TEA has provided from the 2019 4th grade STAR. And this was here, and here, the previous 4th and 7th grade prompts asked them to write about this, what I called earlier as a standalone prompt based on an experience. And this is kind of what it used to look like. Now, what we're going to be asking students to do is to read something, think about it, and then write, and they give them very specific criteria. So, here, here in the redesign, for example, the students are being asked to read this passage called the spelling test, and then using that information, explain how the characters' behaviors change and how this developed, was developed by the playwright, and then gives criteria for the student to think about as they're actually giving their response. So, when you look at the rigor of those two types of writing passages, it's significantly increased on the new style of writing. So, we've had to think about how do we, in the curriculum department, think about integrating writing and text-based responses across the curriculum? So, we use text resource system. And in all grades, in 3 through 6, all RLA courses now have those integrated writing right into them. We've also thought about our student population, and there are specific strategies that we want to make sure provide students access to language supports as they're learning. So, sheltered instructions for all of our ELs. We integrate those. And there's some example of some strategies that are embedded in the toolkit or the toolbox that we have on the Curriculum Central. Read, talk, read, talk, write, sentence stems, QSSSA, which is a strategy where the teacher poses the question, gives students a chance to think about it, and then signal when they're ready. And then they can respond or speak to their, in small groups, and the teacher can leverage that as a way of assessing. But in essence, that's just one example of several kinds of structured discussions that you can facilitate content conversations around the actual subject that they're learning. And then finally, integrating reading-language arts strategies into the non-reading content areas. Specifically, the three that are highlighted here tonight are those related to our Focus Five. So, here's an example. This actually is an example of a tap-and-talk strategy that comes out of our EL elementary toolkit. And this is in mathematics, which gives students an opportunity to build the vocabulary in mathematics, not just simply doing algorithms. In science, this is an example from the Science Unit 1 companion document where a structured discussion is actually elevated. Students are learning about the structure of an atom, and the teacher can utilize this activity to structure the discussion around the actual learning and give students a chance to talk about it, then read the passage, talk about it some more, and then respond to it in writing. This is an example from Grade 7 Social Studies, a Unit 3 companion document where the strategy of close reading is embedded into the learning that they're having around the Indies and the Spanish colonization of the Indies. Close reading is one of our strategies that we are, a part of our Focus Five strategies for secondary. In Grade 6 Social Studies, we've also integrated literacy strategies across the different content areas. So, you can see here is a screenshot from Curriculum Central where there are different instructional tools that teachers can use to help integrate literacy strategies into non-literacy-based content areas. This is another example from Grade 1 where you integrate picture books and discussions to teach mathematics concepts for students in the early primary grades. So, all of these things, these structured resources and supports are really designed to help facilitate more integration of reading-language arts strategies into the non-reading areas. And so, what we've integrated besides the structured resources is also some opportunities for students to engage in writing using a strategy called claims, evidence, reasoning. And in essence, it's exactly what you would think it is by what it means. You state a claim, you leverage evidence from your text to support that claim, and then you rationalize your response through reasoning. This is an example of a companion document in Unit 3 of English 2. And here, the students are given an opportunity to respond to their learning using a graphic organizer to kind of structure their thinking. This is an example from Science, Grade 5, where students are utilizing that strategy that I just mentioned, which is claim, evidence, reasoning, where students are citing evidence and reasoning using STEM scopes and based on the scenario that you hear, you see in front of you. This is one that's about force in motion. The third component of the redesign was really about integrating new question types into the exam. Quality instruction has various ways in which students can respond to open-ended kind of learning formats or questions. And so, TEA wants to provide that as well. So, this is just some examples that TA elevated as what kinds of open-ended things could happen in a classroom where effective instruction is taking place. In this example, students are decomposing fractions, and so, they're actually showing you how you can use a strip diagram to actually model that decomposition. This example is a student responding to the cause and effect around the French and Indian War and how that eventually led to the Stamp Act and colonial protests after reading a passage specifically here called Bills to Pay. So, what does that mean in STAR redesign? It means you have to get away from having only multiple-choice questions if you want to mirror and more open-ended formats on the exam. So, this is an example of what a potential new STAR question could look like. I shared the example of the decomposition using strips. Now, the students would be asked to actually shade in the fraction model to represent the addition of the two fractions. So, rather than simply selecting the answer, they have to generate the answer. And I think that's a really important point to point out. If you're a student and you're a good test taker, oftentimes, what happens is the multiple-choice questions can even cue you towards the correct answer. But when you have to generate the answer completely on your own, the level of rigor is significantly increased. This is an example from RLA. So, in this, on the left-hand side, students were asked to write an open-ended response using evidence from the text that they read in the classroom. And so, in the STAR side, on the right-hand side, that's the way a potential new question might be formatted. They're going to be asked to read a passage and then respond specifically to the passage using evidence from the text. So, this is a list of all the new question types that are being integrated and in what content areas and grade levels those integrations will take place for this school year. And so, what we've had to think about is how do we make sure that our students have practice? And so what we've had to think about is, how do we make sure that our students have practice answering these types of questions in a routine way so that they're not only seeing it when they take a CA or they're not only seeing it when, when their STAR exam shows up? So what we've had to think about is several things. We have provided professional learning, and I'm going to share with you some examples of where that's happened across the system. If you were to go into kick-up and look-up sessions on STAR redesign, there are so many of them. I'm going to highlight some specific ones that we've done to make sure that's being integrated into this, into, across the system. But we provide professional learning, and specifically around the professional learning, we've, we've been focused around what we're calling, what is called technology-enhanced items or TEIs. Those are the items where students will have to manipulate information on the screen to answer the question, and I'll give you some examples tonight. We've also added TEIs to all of our district-created assessments, curriculum assessments. So if a student takes a curriculum, a CA, now the CA will have at least 25% of the answers, the questions be answered using a TEI, just like it's being required in the STAR exam. We've included TEIs in our curriculum resources. I've shared several examples, I'll share with you more examples, I've shared several examples tonight. And then we also have, at the end of each of our units, we have a unit assessment for all of our units. That's designed to be summative in nature so that students can do a pre and a post around those units. And what we've done is we have, we are now integrating TEIs into all of those unit assessments too, and those assessments are going online for teachers. And then finally, we developed a toolkit and published it on the Curriculum Central so that teachers have access to, to learn how to integrate TEIs into their own classroom assessments should they want to make their own tests. So this is just a screenshot from some things within Curriculum Central, and you'll see arrow there are some, some locations of where new STAR items can be accessed in Canvas, literacy strategies that are being elevated in the companion documents, and then teachers can either leverage a tool that we have called H5P or Canvas to actually create assessments utilizing or integrating those TEIs into their own, their own tests. As I was saying earlier, this is just a snippet of several of the professional learning opportunities and trainings that we've offered over the school year. On the left-hand side, you, is, is the, an example of the new STAR question types toolkit that the team put together and put online for teachers. So they not only were aware of what questions were going to be possible on the STAR, but that they had instructions and understand how to integrate that into their actual tests that they create if they're going to do their own. So this is just a screenshot of what that looks like. So if a teacher decides they want to create assessments on H5P, there's a whole walkthrough guide on how to do that. And if they want to create it on Canvas, there's a whole walkthrough guide on how to do that. The other thing we've had to do for teachers is, they don't all call them the exact same thing. So in Edugent or Polaris, when, we call it exactly what STAR calls each of these. So if it's called a hotspot, we call it a hotspot. If it's called, if it's called an inline, inline answer, we call it that. But they don't call them the same thing in Canvas, and they call them something different, H5P. So we had to, we created a, a crosswalk for the teachers so they weren't, they knew exactly what they were, what they all meant. This is an example of using hotspot and H5P. And so what will happen in this scenario, which is very different, is in the past Yes.
So we're rebooting the system.
Okay.
So they can't see if you
Oh, got you. Yeah.
Get everybody on the same page.
Okay. That's the one we're on. Yeah.
Which one is that? Grade seven, what?
That's Grade Seven Mathematics, Unit Four.
Okay.
You should see an orange. Yeah, you should see an orange with graphs on it, is the example. Yeah.
I'm pushing the right answer.
There you go.
Okay.
You got it?
Ready?
You ready? Okay. Sure. So in the past, students would be asked to tell you what the, what the plot points were when they were selecting their answer. In a hotspot, now they actually have to tell you where it is. So it's a little different. They're going to have to drag their, their cursor and, and highlight where the actual point comes together. Here's an example of a drag-and-drop. So this is actually in Unit Five. So this is, these are examples I'm showing you that are not on the assessment, they're actually in the curriculum that teachers can then use. So this is an example of a drag-and-drop where students would take the, the answers on the two far columns, and they would drag them into the squares. So again, no answers are being provided, you have to tell us where it goes. That's an example of a drag-and-drop that will be on STAR. We also, I just wanted to share with you a screenshot of an Edugent handbook that was generated and sent out so that teachers had access to how to create their own assessments in Polaris if they wanted to use it, many teachers do. This is an example, this is an example of a couple of TEIs that were embedded in Curriculum Assessment One. So you'll see on the top, this is an example from US History where the students had inline choice, and on the bottom, there was multi-select. So this one, I wanted to point out specifically because multi-select is very different than what you typically get, which is you have A, B, C, and D, and one of them is correct. Here, you have two correct answers, and you have to identify which two are actually correct. The example above is a short constructive response as part of fifth grade reading language arts curriculum assessment. And then on the bottom is a drag-and-drop like the one I showed you earlier from US History. This one's from Biology where students had to do that for CA One. So we know these things are being embedded in our curriculum assessments. We've also had to think about, how do you instructionally prepare for these new items in both mathematics and literacy, for example? So we provided teachers with information sheets, which I'm going to share with you an example, that really helped teachers think about, how do they leverage tools in their classroom to teach using an instructional approach that is called CRA? It's called Concrete Representational Abstract, where you move students from a very concrete way of learning mathematics to something that actually sits into like an algorithm. We also have labeled that strategy in our learning progression and companion documents within the curriculum and provide professional learning across the different levels so that teachers knew and leaders across the system knew not only about the strategy, but where the support documents were in the curriculum. So this is an example from the curriculum documents. You'll see where CRA is noted, indicated in the learning progression as well as in the companion document. And then the examples you see on the right-hand side are really, they're just tools for a teacher to help him or her understand. If you're going to use algebra tiles, this is an example of how you would use the algebra tile. If you're going to use strip diagrams, this is how you would actually go about using This is an example in, in, it says an example that's sitting in the companion document in Unit One for Algebra One, and this is just another drag-and-drop scenario where students are learning, they're, they're, they're going back and forth between creating a representational or an abstract model of a polynomial expression, and they're use, there can, there's connections within this module around CRA. So here you can see there's drag-and-drop. We've also had to think about these same kinds of things on the ELAR side, on the reading language arts side. And so when it comes to the tools that we provide in Curriculum Central around reading language arts, the focus was really around these strategies that we know everyone are embedding in their classrooms. Reading, guided reading and shared reading, guided reading and shared writing, I'm sorry, guided and shared reading, guided and shared writing, and then close reading and word study, those are our focused areas. So this is an example. If you were to go into Curriculum Central, there's a folder for these different areas. This example comes from the shared writing folder in Secondary. And so in that folder, there are different strategies and activities that teachers can pull from to integrate shared writing into their classroom, and this is one example. The next example is, that I'm showing you is the guided writing folder. And if you were to go into the guided writing folder for Grade Six, this is an example, it's, this is actually for a teacher to really help diagnose how strong their students are actually writing so that they can plan their guided writing lessons and working with their small group instruction. So this, this is a tool actually provided teachers there. The last instructional change when it comes to STAR is really about making sure that students who have unique learning needs are provided accommodations. In an effective classroom, they are provided accommodations, and so we want to provide those also on the exam. This is an example of a variety of ways that students are accommodated in the classroom if they have a unique need. You can see the list in front of you. There's large print, some need line readers, some need visual anchors, there's a variety. And not every student gets everything. It really is supposed to be about what they individually need. And so if that's what effective instruction looks like, then if you're moving to an online assessment, those same tools that would offer those accommodations have to be provided as well. So what TA has done is they've worked with content and language supports, for example, to make sure that text-to-speech was actually provided in a robust way in the new STAR exam. And that would be needed for kids who normally have like an oral administration or need something read out loud to them. They would need this support. The other accommodations that they're offering are those that you can see in front of you. I won't, I won't say them because there are so many of them, but there's several that are under what they call accessibility tools, some that are around content-specific tools that make that content accessible to them, and then also tools to support students who need specific accommodations, like the one I mentioned earlier, like text-to-speech. So what we've had to do is think about, okay, if STAR is going to have that, we have to make sure our students who they take assessments also have access to the same resources when they're online being assessed. So we have integrated, we have worked with Edugent, and they have integrated tools to support all these various accommodations within Polaris when kids take the assessment. We've also promoted the use of something called Writeable, which allows students to, okay, allows students to, to work on their, their writing using editing and revising tools within a, an online kind of format. And then, of course, we have integrated, as I mentioned earlier, literacy strategies such as pre-reading and a special education checklist. So special education teachers, there's a checklist to help them think about the accommodations they're providing students and that those things are being available to them when they're preparing to assess them. So these are just screenshots. This is from Polaris. So you can see across the top, there, those are where the icons are for the online tools for students to use. This is an example from Writeable, which allows students to receive, it provides computer-generated editing and revising tools which kids will have access to when they're taking the STAR exam. It's just another platform to practice something similar. This is accessible through HMH, and so what we've done is we've linked the, the instructions and how to actually access Writeable, all within Curriculum Central. It's part of the adoption. And this example is of a pre-reading activity, as mentioned earlier. So in this example, the students are learning about mixtures, and so to, to get kids thinking, they would actually engage in an activity before they read to kind of prime their pump, so to speak, about the content they're about to engage in. And this is just a screenshot of that checklist and the additional special education resources that we have embedded into the, into Curriculum Central for making sure that we're thinking about all the accommodations and needs of the individual learners. The last big idea, which we've been talking about all night, so I don't know if it's big anymore, is online. It's all going online, and it's everybody. And sometimes there's, there's a misunderstanding that if I'm a special education student and they put it in my IEP, I get to take a paper-based, and that's actually not the case. There are very specific rules about which students qualify, and there's a whole policy that TA published about special education. So in essence, most kids are going to be going online. So what we've had to do is think about how we're going to make sure that's robust here in Arlington. So what, I've talked about many of these things tonight, but just to recap, all of our curriculum assessments are now online. The students are participating in interim assessments that the state provided this year in our system. We have two of them happening in reading language arts and math, and one that's happening for science and social studies. Those are all online. We've converted all of our, we're converting all of our USAs into an online format with TEIs. We've launched Learning.com at the different campuses, the elementary campuses, because one of the things that we thought about is young learners who aren't used to interacting with all their content in a virtual environment. I mean, they did a lot during pandemic, but keyboarding and digital literacy, we want to make sure that that was accessible to them. So we've integrated Learning.com and provided that as a resource so teachers could use that in the classroom so that the students were proficient in utilizing technology. And then, of course, just ensuring that we have the capacity across the system to actually do the assessment. So we've made sure that we have enough computers, enough laptops to actually provide an assessment on any given day. This is just a screenshot of a TEI example of an equation editor. This is from Unit Six, from our, our designed, locally-designed unit summative assessment. This is also another one from our unit summative assessment. This is an example of a multi-select in a hot, a hot text. And these are just screenshots from the Learning.com resource that we're providing, which really is focused around digital literacy. So the last thing I'll just share is where this all came from. It came from TA. This was published on TA's website. It was released in, I want to say late January. Basically, February is when everyone started getting a hold of it. I emphasize that only to give a little bit of an insight about how much work is happening in a very short window of time. If you think about, all the stuff I just showed you are all things that the team's working on, has published and worked on. It's been a very heavy lift, and I think we're not unique in that. Every district's pulling these heavy lifts right now because there's not a lot of time when you start in January, the year before, it's actually going to be redesigned and implemented. You can access more information too on the STAR redesign website TA has posted, and the resources that you'll find on there are listed right there in front, which include samples of the questions, overviews on the different question types and content areas, there's a scoring guide. They also have an FAQ that there's available, as well as all the revised blueprints that were given out so that by content area and grade level, so we knew exactly what, what was, how the test was actually going to be created. And then, like I mentioned earlier, the policy that, that specifies who can qualify for paper-based. And this, these are just examples of each. So this is the, this is a screenshot from their test samplers, their test item samplers. This is one I shared with you earlier tonight, which actually tells you where all the different assessments, questions are going to be integrated across the different content areas. Here is a scoring and reporting guide. And then, of course, the FAQ that I mentioned. And then the last, but not least, is the blueprints. And then, of course, the policy around utilizing paper versus the online assessment. So the last thing I wanted to share with you is just reemphasize a little bit about some of the training we've been doing. This is just a sampling of some of the training. We have had campus-based training, where it was turnaround training and training when they came back. We've done training at the district level where we provided training throughout the fall. And then we've also trained principals and given them an orientation on the redesign. We're also, in the next month, going to be doing a refresh. So we're going to be retraining principals again over this, because as you can see, it's a lot of information that really implicates on how instruction should look like in the classroom, and we want to make sure that they have the tools and supports needed to ensure their, their PLCs are effective. We're also going to be doing the same thing with our coaching staff. We meet with them once a month, and so we're going to be retraining them also so that they're supporting teachers in a way that's going to generate the same kind of learning in the classroom. And then we're going to be working with the level and department leads to refresh because they're the ones that are tied most closely to their actual grade levels, and that's all happening in the next month. So that's the STAR redesign coming shortly to a school near you.
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments?
All right. So, I don't hear it. It's just internal. Okay. Do I need to speak into the camera? So, yeah, this is
Quite extensive. One of the questions that came to my mind as you were talking about all of the implementation things that we have to do, that you have to, or have had to do, technology-wise, training, et cetera. When the TA came up with this, I appreciate everything being research-based, and it seems like it's a good connection to really assessing learners' comprehension and ability, et cetera. Did they put any type of a fiscal note to what this would potentially cost in general as far as districts to implement?
I haven't heard that. No. I have not heard
Okay. And do we have an idea internally? Are we tracking what this redesign is costing us as far as asking the vendors, getting new vendors to do these upgrades, that type of thing? Because it's, it sounds very substantial to me. And I'm not saying I'm against this, I just would, as part of the governing body, would like to know so that we can have those conversations with TA, with the legislators, et cetera.
Yeah, we could try to assemble that.
Okay. And I don't, I don't want to put a burden on you to try to put that together. It just intuitively, it seems like this is a costly proposition that we are undertaking, and I am confident that we, we're blessed that we have the resources to be able to do that. I'm thinking of the It, it just intuitively, it seems like this is a costly proposition that we are undertaking. And I am confident that we, we're blessed that we have the resources to be able to do that. I'm thinking of the probably 1,100 school districts that don't. And what the heck are they doing for our, our state, for our kids? So I'm a little bit concerned as far as that goes. So a little soapbox there, I guess. Do you need this? I don't know. How, how do you want us to handle this?
Which is why, I think to your, to your question, which is why we have given input on the timeline of implementation. Because that's always critical. It's, it's these changes, research-based, et cetera, are important. But they're not important to supersede a timeline that makes sense in a system and teachers and others being able to internalize all these things. Similar to with the accountability refresh. That, that, we don't even have the information. It's going to apply to the spring testing. So always a concern is the timeline for us. We are blessed because we have a lot of different staff with a lot of capacity in these areas that can make the adjustments, our systems. We've invested in Curriculum Central and Text Resources and Polaris and all these systems that Dr. Wertz mentioned. And so we are fortunate in that sense. It still is a tremendous amount of retooling. Again, retooling is not bad if given the appropriate runway and, and that's always a concern. Just a quick side note, when a test is changed and accountability is changed, it's usually with a one-year report only that we get in terms of, of results. And they're not doing that this year. They're reporting. We're actually being held accountable for all these changes in the spring.
One thing I would just add to is the big idea, oh, I think I'm, I'm good. I think the big idea is that TA is trying to mirror on the assessment what, what is supposed to be effective instruction. So many of the actual documents and the things you're seeing in Curriculum Central, I, we've had and people have been doing this kind of teaching for a long time. Where the, where the challenge happens is now it's, if, if you haven't really integrated writing, for example, into your regular instruction or you haven't naturally integrated reading and writing into your science classroom, you're really pushed to do it now. And students are also never have had to show their knowledge in this way before, which is also very different. That's where a lot of lift. And so a lot of our lift has been redesigning our assessments and making sure TEIs are embedded and that everyone's trained. That's, it's, that's where a lot of our time and effort has come from and it has been a lift. But I think the thing that's going to be most challenging, it's, it's helping recognize that when, when students are being assessed mastery, their mastery in the classroom, the old way of A through D isn't going to be enough. They're going to have to be able to actually show it on their own without an answer being provided. And that's, that's, that's different.
Yeah, it is. It's a very high level. Yeah, looking at some of these examples, I'm thinking, I couldn't do this stuff. This is amazing. And I can tell you, I mean, I'm in professional development and, and education as a career. And at the college level, they're not, they're not breaking it down like this. So that has me concerned on two fronts. One, this is really raising the bar for K-12, perhaps premature unnecessarily, I don't know. But I'm also thinking about our, our new teachers that are in the college systems that don't have this type of exposure. And that puts an extra heavy lift still on the districts to have to do all that retooling and training of those recent grads. So. And that was actually, it's a good segue to, to my question. You addressed that it's a heavy lift. Can you speak in maybe its generality or general terms for how, how is the uptake for teachers across the district? Is, are, are the majority of them going, okay, this is, I'm familiar, we got this? Or, I mean, could you have any idea ballpark as far as teachers or certain disciplines where it's a much heavier lift in certain areas?
It's different. I think, I think, I think the stress is there. It's simply because it's a new exam and kids are being asked to answer questions in different ways. Anecdotally, after the kids took the first CA, we heard, oh my gosh, I had to think about this differently. Because, you know, as human beings, we tend to go about our routine and it's been really disrupted in terms of what the expectation is on the backside, which is why, in terms of, you know, taking the assessment, which is why all this training and information has to be sent out and keep integrated. It's almost like I told the team, we have to be the broken record because it's such a, it's such a big shift that people have to think about what that implies in the way they go about teaching every day and the assignments that they're creating for kids. It can't be the way it used to be.
Sure.
Or you can't take for granted that you're going to get a multiple choice.
So how are you handling for, for those teachers? Obviously, there's the learning, there's professional development. I saw that the coaching is going on. How, how granular does that look or does that get for each classroom teacher? So that they know individually that they're, they're hitting the mark or they're still, they're missing the boat? I mean, how?
I think that's where the PLCs come in.
Okay.
With coaches and their leads and their design. As part of PLCs, they'll actually, they can look at student artifacts and work and think about how kids are performing based on those artifacts. There's a whole process that they use. But I think that's where the iterations happen probably the most is during PLCs and lessons design. The coaches are in there assisting and that's why we want to hit the coaches and when we're training.
Sure.
Teachers got, got trained, but you know, teachers don't go to training all year long. They, we have all sorts of training opportunities that they can go to after school, but they're in the classroom teaching.
Right.
So we have to make sure not only are those opportunities available to them, but that they have access to people who are actually in their job embedded environment to reinforce and teach these things. So that's where the principals, the coaches and the leads come in.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I'm thinking this doesn't even get to our sub-level yet, our substitutes, that they're going to have to have considerable adjustments on what they're doing as, as subs as well. Thank you for that. The final question that I have, with, with the, the accommodations, like the example that you used as far as like text to speech, what does that look like for that student that needs that accommodation? Are they still in the same room with all of their student, the other peers?
I believe so with headphones.
With headphones, okay.
Is that correct Natalie? If you get text to speech, you're still in the room testing and you just have headphones?
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure we're, there's not some kind of isolation.
Well, sometimes there, it depends on their accommodation. Some students have to be tested in a separate room. It just depends on the student. But I, I believe, I can double check, but I believe they.
I just wanted to make sure that this, this form of assessment from the state doesn't unfairly out certain students with certain accommodations that they, they don't need to be.
No, in fact, their testing environment should feel very much the same as way it's always felt. The difference is instead of a person doing a read aloud with you or your computer's doing it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, thank you. And I will literally yield this mic to.
So I, I'll try to keep it brief with just two questions. So the first one revolves around, this is technology, right? And so you got to be concerned about usability because poor usability will impact our test scores. And it's important for the kids to get used to this technology. And I know you mentioned Polaris and Edugent's.
Edugent's is Polaris. We just call it Polaris.
Okay, all right, all right. So, and correct, we've had one CA in Polaris, the, it's one CA that has technology, these type of technology enhancements, correct?
And CA two or in the, getting ready, right in the middle of it, yeah.
Getting ready, all right. How close is the usability in, you know?
In Polaris?
In Polaris versus what they'll actually get on the STAR?
So when Polaris, Polaris's tools that kids have for their accountability, for their accommodations mirror what will be in Cambium. The difference is, is they, they might sit in a different little, different place. Like they're, they don't necessarily are sitting in the exact same location. They're, but they're, they're pretty much the, when Polaris was redesigned, when he redesigned them this summer and infused all Polaris users with the possibility of using the accommodations, the tools that are there, they work to mirror what's going to be in Cambium.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so the second one is the, the level of rigor in the type of questions that you talked about in terms of, is something going to be your typical A through D? So the redesign in Polaris is at the same level across the board as what those kids will be expected to perform?
Yeah, so the CAs are the ones we have in Polaris. Those are the ones that we generate locally. And those questions are, those tests have all been mapped to STAR. That's how we do our predictability and all that kind of stuff. The only difference is now we're integrating, for the first time, we've never had them before, the TEIs into our, our assessments. I would say the answer is yes. That's always the intent. We've never tested these questions before because it's the first time we've ever done it. But we have been told based on the blueprint specifically, what types of TEIs go into which assessments so that we made sure that we were assessing the right standards with the right TEI and not mixing them by accident. So I, it's, it's a really good first stab at it. Though we have to go through the process and then we can answer that, that question. Like when Natalie does her analysis, you know, which questions were too hard and which ones were too easy and all of that.
But now we've got another component. Which ones had technical problems that prevent the kids from answering? Because I had anecdotal feedback, there were a couple of usability issues with our CA because it was brand new and there's going to be bugs, right? So that's also important too, is to know that answer of, okay, everyone bombed on question four. Was there something technically wrong with the way the system worked on question four? We've got to answer those.
We, we thought of that. And there, the other question that we've asked ourselves is if everyone is doing poorly on a specific type of TEI. It could be that they just need more exposure to also that kind of question because they, they didn't get it, you know? That's so, both of those two things. You're right, yeah.
That's very important. Thank you for that. And I'm going to echo what my colleague Dr. Rice said is I'm also curious of how much this has cost us and kind of new software licenses, the extra training, the extra hours of work to redesign things. But, you know, we can get an idea of just the technology cost alone. I'd be curious to see that.
I only have one question. It's, you mentioned this. It's interesting because TA has said that the purpose behind the STAR redesign is to better match what classroom instruction looks like. But here we are and districts are trying to match our instruction now to this new assessment. But we're all in the same boat. It's not just AISD. It's all around the state. And, you know, it's a very thin line because the last thing that we want to do and promote and, and the last thing we want for our children is to be in a classroom where we're forced to teach to the test. But again, you know, it's kind of a double-edged sword because we don't want navigation of this new assessment to hinder student performance. So we have to acclimate them to the format. I'm wondering if, because I know they have their STAR interim coming up very soon. Are we going to be able to see access or have access to that data? Or is that just going to be something that the state has access to?
Which data are you specifically?
How they perform on the interim. Because aren't we assessing?
Yeah, we get, yeah, we get their, we get, we get results.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. We get our, those results are given to us and we can run them just like we would a STAR exam.
Okay, great. And the next question I was going to ask is are the teachers going to be able to see that by standard so they, they can use that data?
So they'll be able to see, I, my understanding is that the data will be produced to us in the same way that you would, you would get on STAR. So I think they should be able to see.
That'd be useful. And I mean, you know, I hope our teachers don't beat themselves up over the cumulative data because we're not even halfway through the school year. But being able to see how our students are doing on the standards that we have taught, I think would be really useful, especially since students are on Cambium on the state's platform, getting acclimated with this new format and all the new accommodations. That's my only question.
Just to follow up to hers is when, how quick is the turnaround from taking the interim to getting the test results back?
On my calendar. I don't know it by hand, offhand, but I think it's pretty quickly because that was the whole.
A week or so or a month or so?
It's, it's pretty quick because that's their whole point, which is you have to be able to.
Right. Use it. You've got to use the data.
24 hours. There you go.
Awesome.
Thank you, Dr. Luthers.
No questions for me?
From an English teacher perspective, I am thrilled to see all of this writing. And I have thought that students need to be writing across the curriculum for a long time. Because if you know a subject, you're able to write about it. And, and I have always chosen words over numbers. But I noticed on some of these, for even the math, it's a different approach. And I think maybe I could have even learned math with this way of the shading in and the manipulatives and all that. I think that's a, a really good way for students to learn and, and show what they've learned. But I love all the writing and, and I'm glad that they're not focusing on background information because that is so unfair for students that don't have the same backgrounds. And so I like the way that they're presenting the topics and reading a passage and then writing about it. I think that's the best way for students to show what they've learned. And so as an English teacher, I love all the writing. But thank you so much, Dr. Wertz, for showing us all of this and explaining it to us. Well, I'll just say it. I've never been a big proponent for STAR, but I do think that I like this new approach. I'll have to see more to know about it. I don't know. It just seems a little bit more fair or, I, I don't know what I'm, what the word I'm looking for. But I'm a little bit more accepting of this format right now. We'll, we'll see at the end of the year. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm kind of liking what they're doing here.
And if, before I, I go, I would like to take a second to acknowledge my team. They have worked hours and hours and hours. And I, I can't even, I can't even really in words express how much work it's been. I just really appreciate, appreciate the time and effort they put into it. Their expertise has been invaluable. So, yeah.
And I think this will be so helpful for teachers and the students to have an idea of what it's going to be like rather than just springing it on them with the actual test. And I love all the support material and the online things that, that you and your team have provided for teachers to use. I think that is so important. And I know that took a lot of work putting all of that and embedding all of that in there. But thank you so much for that. I think it's going to make a big difference for our students and our teachers. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. We now come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items? Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. It is now time for our superintendent to, no report tonight. Do I have any trustees with anything to report?
Thank you. It is November, which is Native American Indian Heritage Month. Once again, these proclamations were set in place by presidents to encourage everyone from all backgrounds to appreciate the culture of what America is made up of. And this month, we are celebrating Native American Indians. Things you celebrate, art, food, music, their culture, education. So history is extremely important. And hopefully something that will continue to be impressed upon our students as well as family members in our community. Just short little facts. In 1916, Red Fox James, he was a member of the Blackfoot Nation. He rode on horseback to get endorsements from 27, 24 different states to just have a day that honors Native Indians. And that was accomplished. Then President Ronald Reagan in November of, in 1986 proclaimed a week-long celebration. And then President George W. Bush then proclaimed the entire month of November in 1990 to celebrate what he called at that time National American Heritage Month. And then later the name was changed to Native American Heritage Month under President Barack Obama. Just a few little facts that there are currently over 175 different indigenous, indigenous languages that are spoken in the U.S. Based on the 2020 census, there were 9.1 million people who identified as Native American, which calculates about 2.9% of the U.S. population. And that's both Native American and Alaskan. And that's both Native American and Alaskan Native. So, just my little, short little remark is, my great-grandmother was full-blooded Cherokee Indian. And as a little girl, my Mema was still alive, so I had an opportunity to go to Oklahoma, go to the reservations, and I loved to go visit. First of all, I thought she was beautiful, her hair was beautiful. She was very smart, and I always got to leave, remember, I was a little girl, but I always got to leave with handmade jewelry, and that was just the funnest thing of all. But, anyway, just once again, take a time to use this month to gather information about Native American, and how they have contributed to the USA today. Our performance today just reminded me, just looking down there, of just what the pattern of America looks like. And it is a pattern. It is a pattern of differences. And I think the more that we continue to learn about each other, and the history, I just think the happier that we will be. So, just take a little time this month. That's my report.
I've got a mic. Is it hot? Okay. So, I just, thank you for that, Ms. Mays. That was great. I just wanted to put a shout-out to our 18-plus students, our special needs students program that is not widely known about in our community. But this morning, I had the pleasure of accompanying one of our, our community citizens out there, Mr. Duane Lee. He was golfing mid-October, lost his wedding ring that was on his finger for about, almost 50 years. Was in a, quite a state about it. The 18-plus program students, those individuals work at that golf club, and that's part of their instruction. And a couple days later, they found that ring, and turned it in to the golf club manager, who got back in touch with Mr. Lee. So, this morning, he did a little pop-up surprise, surprise celebration, and those students, when they showed up, they, they had no idea, and they were there to, to work and do what, what they've been working on. And they were just elated that it was about them. And they, they were still thanking everybody else, who were, no, thank you, just being wonderful citizens. And for me, it was just a special thing, because for us, you know, our strategic plan is all about, at the end, having good, responsible citizens. And these young men and women are already doing that, and really embodying what our goal is up here as a board. So, I was very appreciative of Mr. Lee recognizing them, and thanking them, but also to the, the students that we have in that program. It is phenomenal what they do in that program, to help them, and get them ready to take on jobs out in, in the world, and, and the things that they do. So, I just wanted to put that out there, it was pretty neat. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Reich.
Over the weekend, a lot of us had the opportunity to go to Gunn, Gunn Junior High, and Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy, to celebrate 50 years of Gunn. And although the campus has only served the Fine Arts and Dual Language for a short amount of time, it has a very rich history of being an excellent junior high. And it was wonderful to be able to attend, too, as an alum of Gunn. I was a former Gator, and that's actually where I met my husband. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the adult children of Floyd Gunn, and for their involvement over the decades, it has not waned. I remember, as a junior high kid, the family visiting the campus on multiple occasions, and they've always been really closely connected. And I think that that's so beautiful, that over the decades, that's the power of our namesakes in Arlington, ISD. So, shout-out to Dr. Varnell and the Gunn family for planning and implementing a wonderful celebration. It was awesome to attend, and see the students perform, that was my favorite part. And I also wanted to say that there are so many great family engagement, family engagement events going on, especially in the fall, it's my favorite. I recently got to attend McNutt Elementary's Math-a-Ween. I know a lot of campuses are having similar events. Thank you to first-grade teacher, Sherry Bergdorff, for inviting us, and it was a packed house. I, I brought my son, and we could barely get in. It was such an awesome turnout. So, thank you to everyone at McNutt, for hosting such a wonderful learning experience. And there was trick-or-treating, if you're wondering. Those were two great events I got to attend this past week.
Anyone else have anything to report? Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
We do not.
All right. We are adjourned, it is 8:12. Do I need to say that? We will now go into closed.